And even the great.
And in seven, I'm going to call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. It's like the most.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America. Into your repelling, which is chance, one agent of your power, in this small, which is every event.
Okay, all members of the board of selectmen are here and present. Regarding the the meeting minutes. I'm gonna share as much as I can without divulging more than I should, but Peg Hoffman has taken ill and it's pretty serious. She won't be back for a while. So Savo, Benaskalco, I'm sorry, it's not Benaskalco anymore.
Kalilova.
Savo is going to be. Savo is going to be filling in for for a little bit. She either put in on or has submitted, but the board does not yet have the meeting minutes from December seventh. That they're late, but that's a product of Peg's. Circumstances, so they'll be available for our next meeting. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for the public to address members of the board. We ask that you keep your comments to not more than three minutes, then refrain from items that are on the agenda. I'm first gonna ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the board of selectmen, and then I'll give the same opportunity to anyone who is with us online. I'll recognize you, please state your name and your address and state your business. Yes, ma'am.
Roger, one woman, Brad, now I have two copies, I'd like them to submit, be submitted in into the minutes. One. And one of us. So I'm here tonight. Because I want to express the importance of residents being able to get information without delay and without repercussion. So I wanna. I wanna enter those agreements into the minutes. And those are some requests that I submitted for information. Some information may surprise you. So. Back months ago, I asked information about whether. If the first eleven had written confirmation from the town attorney that our funds can basically be used for community service. I ultimately got a response that said, no. The confirmation came from several conversations with representatives from the USDA. It was provided more of each time as the final rules federal regulations around the CBS awards is still being drafted. Another request. I basically. Wanted to know what defense. Is there any problems with the soil? Is there any problems with the concrete? Any problems with the building? So ultimately, the answer was no problems were identified with the space for the property. So I'm actually surprised when. In a wetlands meeting, there was public participation, which is been there too, indicating there is a problem. And there was a person that spoke and also a wetlands commissioner that spoke basically saying that there's problems. And sure enough. Addendum number three indicates where our problems. So I don't know what he knew. But according to what I have, there were no defects, there were no problems. So I also wondered what was included in the cost. So I asked about moving expense and electronics. And I also asked the EDF report. The grant, when I finally got it, I do have some numbers. So it indicates that basically three point eight million was for development and construction, one hundred and thirty thousand for architect fees, two hundred thousand for equipment, four hundred and twenty thousand for contingency, and a hundred and fifty thousand for water. It shouldn't be so difficult to get this information. It really should be. The residents would do their best. So I want you to look over that and think, is that an acceptable response for someone who lives in this town? For something so expensive. So again, I want all of you to read it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, give three minutes.
Eighty-seven Rice Street. Like this added for those records, please. So I wanted to discuss the Freedom of Information Act complaint against the first selectman in the town of East Windsor.
So ma'am, that that's on our agenda tonight. We do not take public comment.
It doesn't say that on your agenda.
That that has been the practice of this board.
But the agenda does not indicate that I can't speak about it.
Very well, go right ahead. You still have, you have two minutes for me.
I have three minutes.
Point of order, I I started my clock when she got out there. And you just took a minute off, and she only took about ten seconds to start. I'm gonna start my watch here at the point of order, but you shaved the minute off over time before she even got started.
You have two minutes.
The hearing officer made a proposed final decision which included several key findings and orders. The hearing officer dismissed the town attorney's claim that the FOI commission lacked jurisdiction over the complaint in the issue of withholding documents. Number two, it was determined that the first selectman in the town violated the Connecticut general statutes by failing to produce responsive documents and by unjustly withholding records from me regarding the Scout Hall project. The first selectmen in the town were found in violation of the promptance requirements set out in the same sections of the Connecticut State statutes. As a result, the first selectmen in the town were ordered to provide unredacted documents to me within forty-five days free of charge and to strictly adhere to a disclosure and promptance standards in the future. During the hearing, it was revealed that the first selectman had no written estimates for the Scout Hall project prior to November twenty twenty-two referendum. The first selectman had no invoices or costs as to how much the taxpayers paid for the Everbridge robocall system or the distribution of the five village voice. He admitted to having a written estimate for the April twenty-three referendum, but he could not produce it. Furthermore, the first selectman's use of the town's emergency notification system to advocate for a yes referendum vote was found to be in violation of the state election laws by the State Election Enforcement Commission. The town attorney defended the withholding of documents from the the public, and he testified that he was high, it was a highly contested project with a lot of online discussion and the releasing of preliminary documents that plans to the public could have a dramatic impact on the vote that was coming up in April. He said that he and the first selectman decided not to release the certain documents to me because they in some way could impact the progress of the project that was deployed to the public. After the rejection of the Scout Hall project referendum vote in November twenty-two, twenty-two, many taxpayers were asking how much money was spent. Unfortunately, we will never know. Never did I expect that a simple request from a taxpayer would turn into such an ordeal. Many people, I am sure, would have given up and walked away. Throughout this process, I was publicly criticized by this board and other board members for asking for documents that should have been available to all taxpayers. We as a community demand better. We demand honesty, transparency, and adherence to the town charter and the law.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Brokers. Education today to have two assessment appeal hearings. And I have to say that the personnel that were handling that were extremely courteous, quite helpful. I was very impressed with the way they operate.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other other public comment?
Sure, why not?
Yes, ma'am, and you, sir. Name and address, please.
Redding, L, seventy-six, Home Street. Do I have to get these out first?
We we don't actually take documentation from the public. The minutes are, this is not a public hearing.
Okay. Regarding the FOIA complaint, I want to address the attempts to intimidate, harass, embarrass Lynn Stanley during this process. Such behavior has no place in our town. VOS April six meeting one example is inexcusable. Disagreements and legal challenges must be handled with respect and civility. As members of this community, we should stand against any form of personal criticism like what we saw against Lynn Stanley. Every taxpayer should be treated equally and have access to public records. The outcome of Lynn Stanley's FO IA complaint raises serious concerns about fair and democratic processes in our town. The withholding of key documents and plans from the public, as admitted by the town attorney, undermines the democratic decision-making process. We must ensure that all future projects are handled with more transparency and openness. Today, I want to highlight the financial repercussions of the first selectmen and the town's actions. Their baseless legal strategies against Lynn Stanley's legitimate request for information have led to significant legal expenses. This is not just a matter of law, but also a fiscal responsibility. Our community deserves better management of its resources and funds. Thank you.
You, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Name, Rand D. Stanley, eighty-seven Rice Street.
We don't submit documentation for now.
That's for the record. Okay, so. January fourth, two thousand twenty-four. This is for the record. Preaching to every one of you. After the voters rejected the Scout Hall project in November of two thousand twenty-two, a simple question was asked of the first select. The question was how much money was spent on the project. Scout Hall, the board was voted down. I stand here tonight to express my support for my wife Lynn and her pursuit of transparency. And answers to this question. Over a year later. The FOI hearing officer's decision clearly indicates a violation of the Connecticut general statutes by the first selectman and the town. This isn't just about one complaint. It's about upholding the spirit of the Freedom of Information Act and ensuring our town's elected board of selectmen is accountable for its actions and decisions. Especially regarding the Scout Hall project. My wife's FOI request and the subsequent hearings revealed several key issues. The lack of a written estimate for the project. Intentional document withholding by the first selectman and the town attorney. Misuse of the emergency notification system in violation of election laws and attempts to discredit, harass, and embarrass her. The hearing officer's decision affirmed that the town's legal strategies to dismiss her complaint were baseless and contrary to the law, resulting in significant legal expense for the town. That was your choice, not ours. You made that decision, okay? You can smile and be arrogant all you want, I don't care. The recent FOI hearing outcome is a reminder that integrity must be at the core of our local government. The first selectmen in the town's village produced necessary documents and their violation of promptance requirements set a concerning precedent. We as community members demand better. We demand adherence to legal standards and ethical governance. The findings of the FOI hearing and the SEC finding of the misuse of the town's emergency notification system for the Scout Hall referendum, that's deeply troubling. This misuse not only violates state election laws, but also erodes the public trust. Think about that. It's imperative that our town officials use our public resources responsibly and legally moving forward. Happy New Year.
Next. Name and address, please. Excuse me. Name and address, please.
William Dove, one oh nine Melrose Wood. I'll make this mercifully brief, I always try to. Much of what happened with the Scout Hall thing has been done behind closed doors in darkness, as I call it. I've got a short list here, which I won't bother to read to you. You've heard it before. Mrs. Stanley's original FOI request had to do with information that we felt had been kept from the public. That request, to some extent, was stonewalled. As I understand it, the town lawyer has recently told the state lawyer for the Freedom of Information Commission that some information was deliberately withheld prior to the first referendum vote in order to influence the referendum vote. Now. Tonight's agenda calls for this board to go into executive session to discuss the entire situation. To what extent, I don't know. Am I the only one in the room that finds it ironic that the answer to darkness has been a secret session tonight? So we can double down and have more darkness? I find it quite ironic. In fact, food for thought. Why don't we ask the town lawyer that tonight's executive session, according to state law, meets those requirements? That lawyer, I wouldn't know, but why don't we ask him and get a formal opinion? Maybe a little bit late, you guys are still gonna go into session anyway. I'm not a member of the board, I'm not gonna make a motion anyway. I make a motion that this board not discuss this issue in secret. But we discuss it in open session for everybody can hear your thoughts. Mr. Bowles, on a lighter note. Somebody told me you might second that motion if I made it. I don't think you will, but I thought I would suggest that. Seriously. We need to bring this into the open light about some of the things that take place behind closed doors. I think this is an opportunity to take this start. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please. I won't make you come up because I know you're.
Are you talking?
Yes.
Oh, Chris Sherry, one oh nine, twelve three. I just wonder why there's four board members sitting so that I can see them and right at the end.
Oh, you can't see me?
Well, I can.
I'm looking right at you. I can see you right at me. The reason I'm sitting here.
Point of order.
I can't see down.
We're not supposed to discuss the whole during.
I just think.
She asked me a question.
No, she did not.
No, she does not. She goes to the chair, please.
I can't see anybody just sitting on the ends of your.
You do not address the public during public participation.
Am I supposed to?
Yes, ma'am, you're still up.
I just think it would be better if you could see, if that person could see everybody in the room, not the board members. They're all talking about the same thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
There any other public comment? There anyone online who would like to address the members of the board? If so, please unmute yourself, state your name and your address, and state your business. Okay. We will move on to reappoints.
Make a motion to reappoint James Spencer to the Arts and Culture Committee, regular member for a term expiring January one, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. New appointments.
Move to appoint Kristen Bloom as a regular member of the Arts and Culture Committee for a term expiring October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to add that Kristen has been regularly attending meetings as a member of the public and has been giving input, so I think she'll be a valuable member.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. This next one, the gentleman has been involved with the American Heritage River Commission. He's interested in in supporting the American Heritage River Commission. He's applied to be an associate member of the American Heritage River Commission. He's not actually eligible to be appointed because he's not a town resident. So I I bring that forward simply to thank him for his engagement thus far. But the reason we can't appoint him is because the charter precludes somebody who doesn't live in East Windsor from being appointed to the board of mission, so we just need to actually take no action on that.
But just for the record, Jake, because he was from our town and he wasn't fully aware of the process for that committee. I had the secretary or you were out check on it for me. And then because of the way that the second attachment on associate members that accept the will of the commission, which I took as the mission that he wanted to be on, so I asked him to make a phone call to the Shermonds to see if this was acceptable with this gentleman being on the board, and they were close a part of it. But since he's not here, we don't have to make a motion. I just want the board to know that they're looking forward to having him as an associate member.
Right, he's certainly welcome to participate as he has been, but he can't be appointed.
I would also point out that Enfield has a Skin River Water Set Association, which is pretty active for the exact same purposes that American Heritage are, so they might want to seek them.
Or continue to volunteer with us.
And you will.
Dave Swain, for a position as a member of the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion that we appoint Dave Swain as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals prior to November eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna ask that we postpone agenda items, agenda item eights until after executive session.
We'll move to postpone agenda item eight until after executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. I'm gonna ask that we hold agenda item nine A until our next regular meeting.
We'll move to hold agenda item nine A, discussion of emergency management performance grant until our next meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Aye.
No. All in favor? Opposed? The lag is ahead of time this time.
Not on Zoom.
Uh, we just cut it out. Okay, nine B, discussion, potential vote on the Broadbrook Library Association's request for an audit waiver. We've granted this in the past. I believe they're the only agency that has requested one, and they're the only agency that is really can make the compelling argument that they do. It would eat up a significant portion of the town's funding for the Broadbrook Library if they had to turn over a full audit to the town chair. We granted this last year. They're back with a request this year. The letter's in your pocket. I think you guys are all familiar with the issue. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, if you don't mind. We've done this in the past, and I only agree, and I think it's right that we do it again, but I do have a question. In your last paragraph, Paul Anderson, you alluded to the fact that there's no certified public accounting teams in East Windsor at this time. I just wanted to make sure that they're aware that financial reports should be available to us.
Yeah, and they have made those available, because they they've made their their.
But I just want to make sure they're able to do that again this year. Do you have an accountant that can do that?
No, we provide it.
Your, your, okay, as long as we we get the.
We don't have money to waste on a town.
Okay, I understand.
But the data is readily available.
Okay. So then I'll make a motion that we accept the request from the Private Book Library Association to weigh the audit requirement as outlined in East Windsor Order means eighty-one dash two, section eighty-eight dash nine B, the annual audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
So so the, I understand the reason for the waiver, the audit, is so that they can request funds from the town through the budget process.
That right? That is right.
So following up on Marie's comment there, you know, if if they do make a request for funds, it'd be good to get like a a budget or something from the organization, depending on how much money you're asking for. Because if it's significant, I think I'd like to be able to review. Marie would also sound like, you know, have an opportunity to review the basics about the organization so we can weigh the, you know, provided the ground, man, especially if it's if it's very significant.
All of that is provided during the budget process and budget book, which will be available the first month of February. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd ask that we postpone agenda item nine C until after executive session.
Make a motion postpone nine C until after executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you need to recuse yourself on this?
So my intention is to recuse myself on item C. And my intention is not to participate in executive session when this item comes up.
Understood.
But I will be in executive session for the remaining item.
Right, understood. Okay. Then I'm gonna ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll recuse all of state.
Tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling eleven thousand and seven hundred and eight dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is a doubt.
I was just thinking about asking a question, but.
Public participation, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. If you'd like to address the board, please identify yourself by your name and your address and state your business. I will first ask if there's anybody in the room who would like to address the board, and then provide the same opportunity to anybody who's online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Seeing none, a motion to go into executive session would be in order. It will involve the tax assessor Helen Potts and one of our town attorneys, Brian McCann. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we go into an executive session and include Attorney Brian McCann in our department.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Helen Potts.
Motion's been made.
You have it on second session.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at seven twenty-eight. All right, it's nine oh one. I'm gonna call the board of selectmen back to order. Our first item of business. Let's take up this agenda item eight A, discussion and potential vote on the settlement of Catholic Cemeteries Association. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the settlement of Catholic Cemeteries Association tax booth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a comment. I'm not, I'm not gonna support this. I don't think we should be. I don't think we should be agreeing changes the value of land. I don't have a problem with the meaning as to the person we're talking to, but I don't think we should be in the business of treating land differently for one owner versus another.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to one. We're gonna take up agenda item nine C. There will be no action on this item, but I do want to read a couple of points from the Freedom of Information Commission's decision. Number fifty-four. It is found that the respondents conducted the required balancing tests and determined that the public interest in withholding the records clearly outweighed the public interest in disclosing. It is also found that the balancing test was undertaken in good faith and that the reasons for non-disclosure are not frivolous or patently unfounded. Number fifty-seven. It is found that the respondents provided the complainant with all responsive records that they maintained or kept on file, except for those records that were publicly available as described in paragraph thirty above, and those records that they claimed were exempt from disclosures described in paragraph thirty-four. Number fifty-eight. It is also found that while the respondents reached out to other town departments, they did not have a duty to maintain or make available the records of any other public agency. Number sixty. The respondents testified, and it is found that they immediately began processing the November fourteenth request, and that such process took a considerable amount of time. Number sixty-three. It is found that the complainant did not inform the respondents, the complainant, Ms. Stanley, did not inform the respondents of their particular importance of the records nor specific timeframe by when she needed the records. Number sixty-four. Based on the foregoing and under the facts and circumstances of this case, it is found that the respondents acted quickly. it is found that the respondents acted quickly and without undue delay in responding to the complaint's November fourteenth requests, except with respect to those responsive documents that were publicly available at the time of the request. Publicly available at the time of the request means there was another means of which to get it. It was available on the town website. So it is therefore concluded the respondents violated the promptance provisions, but only with respect to those publicly available records. That's the finding of the Freedom of Information. Is there any further business coming before the board's select?
We adjourn at nine oh five P M.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to nine oh five.